Fiercely pursuing accountability on policy and implementation. It's time for another DJ Elf 7 candidate interview.
Hey, what's up? It's your boy DJ Elf 7 and as you know, I'm interviewing every single person running for office. Got one of the candidates right here and I'm particularly excited about this guy today. We're gonna get more into that in a moment though, yeah? So alright, why don't you introduce yourself? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Robert Waterman. Uh, I am Reverend Dr. Robert Waterman, the father, father, husband, pastor of Antioch Baptist Church, going on 20 years. I'm running for city council in the 36th district. Um, also, I'm on a community board, uh, over 15 years, District 16 school system. I worked in there for seven years. Um, I've just been a man of faith, just working hard. From Mega Evans College, I've been there going on five years to, uh, chairing the Interfaith Hospital Trustee Board, one Brooklyn Health, uh, trustee board co-chair. Um, just doing a lot of things to make sure that we improve our community. Um, a lovely wife who's an attorney, she's running for, um, uh, 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 judge and District, uh, two, Judicial District two, um, three lovely kids, um, Nia, Imani and Jada, wonderful girls. Uh, so I've just been blessed to have an opportunity to work and serve the community.
That's a wonderful thing, man. So, um, alright, so look, I got a bunch of questions for you. Um, one of them is, um, I see on your site that you really, uh, promote yourself as a long time activist and I think that's very cool. Correct? Yeah? So in your activist background, what are some of the, like, uh, this actually channels geared for activists, just so you know. Um, so what are some of the, like, you know, if someone else is activist out there, they're like, how can I be effective? In your, you know, significant experience, what are some of the more, uh, you know, um, effective things that organizers and activists can do?
One, um, I even got a text just a few minutes ago, someone asking me the question, how can, uh, they get involved? Um, activism is not just rallying. Activism is behind the doors, making sure that you're in the room, making sure that you are help changing and shaping legislation. Um, activists go further than just, um, when issues occur. Um, activism can start on your block, you know, block, uh, block leaders, people taking care of their block by block. Or just participating in community boards, um, where there are various communities, um, committees that are set up from housing all the way through transportation that you could get involved with. Um, mentoring, uh, is a part of activism, is just making sure that there's another generation of leaders that are coming up. And I think that we failed at, at, at mentoring, um, younger people to understand that getting out to vote, getting people to, to rally about, about what, what's the local politics, what's happening there? So for me, activism is broader than just, um, marching, um, or rallying when there are issues.
I really deeply appreciate that and I think that that's, um, that's something that I also espouse as well. Uh, but you know, at least the people in rallies are going past the, we have to also be careful about armchair activism, right? Yeah? And I really like your local focus because there's a lot of people who get all, you know, geared up about national issues, but about local issues, they have no clue what's going on. But they have more ability to impact what goes on locally and that's, you know, they say, uh, I think Nas had a verse where he said, "How are you gonna fix the world when you ain't fixed home yet?" Right? So
That's correct.
Maybe, you know, you need to look at what's going on locally. So I love that focus right there. It speaks really, you know, to, to me on a very deep level, which I appreciate. Um, so let's talk about, um, your, uh, I do have some, uh, political partners I work with, I want to make sure that they're taken care of first. So let's talk about some of these issues right here. Um, do you support freeing Assange?
Um, not familiar.
Okay, I've heard of WikiLeaks.
Yes, do I have WikiLeaks? That's when, when the issues was going on with, um, Hillary and all those.
Exactly. Came out, right? Exactly. So what happened is that Assange, right? Um, he actually, you could look it up, there's something called double taps, where they showed that, you know, um, that the military didn't have to kill civilians, but did, right? Yeah?
Right, right, right.
Um, and then he revealed that and that was considered to be contrary to, uh, US interests. Um, and it's footage like that that ended up stopping the Vietnam War, but nowadays, you know, footage like that is not released to the public. You know what I'm talking about? So the thing is, um, now he's in jail. Would you support freeing him?
For the good, yes.
Yeah.
Um, because what, what, what happens is that when, when, when information is hidden, we, we, we lack to make better decisions.
Here's something, just to make it a little bit easier too, right? Yeah? If we take a look at, there's a lot of similarities to Watergate. So the thing is that, remember that Assange did not actually do the, get, get the tapes himself, you know, that was Chelsea Manning. Just like the New York Times, he just published the information, right? He was given the information by somebody else, so it's not like he was really doing anything really beyond, right? What traditionally press does, is supposed to do.
Sharing information.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Yeah, so, yeah, it's pretty crazy.
Yeah.
Um, you heard of Mumia Bujamal?
No, talk to me about it.
Ooh, okay, well, he's a very famous, uh, I think he was a Black Panther who was actually jailed, um, for, uh, he's known to be a political prisoner and the case against him was very weak. Um, the, uh, the officers actually tracked their statements, but he's still in jail on death row. So, um, Mumia Bujamal is actually quite a famous person in the, uh, you know, political activist, uh, community, prisoner community. Okay.
And, but that happens to a lot of people in my community. See, uh, because of, of, of false information. See, information, information can actually be damaging if it's not true to the game. Um, when it comes down to really talking about, uh, securing, uh, communities. And I think that even some of the parishioners that I've dealt with and some of those, um, because we do a, um, a reentry program. And, and some of the guys that have come back in the community, um, you know, we're working with to, to help clean up or expunge the past because they did not do the stuff that they were accused of.
Yeah.
Now, what, what, and, and all that process, you know, it was a simple thing is that we've all done some stuff, but don't, don't put on things on our, on our, uh, paperwork that we haven't done, you know? And so, so when I speak to them every day, you know, they say, "Pass." You know, um, "Do you have access to so and so?" And, and you know, I make my calls and I try to get them in rooms where they can actually, uh, speak their piece. Because there's always somebody being falsely accused of things, um, that they haven't done.
Yeah.
It's been like that and that's been a trend in urban communities.
That's true. What about UBI? Do you support UBI?
You gotta talk to me about it.
Okay, UBI is something known as universal basic income.
Oh, yep, got it, got it, got it. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it was made famous by Dr. Martin Luther King, who said, you know, um, "When we look at poverty, we need to start thinking about a universal basic income." It was repopularized again by Andrew Yang recently. And, um, you know, they were, they are kind of like a group that I work with. It's quite interesting. I don't know if you've seen my latest work. But, um, yeah, do you support UBI?
Yes, yes, yes.
Appreciate that.
And because, you know,
I do as well.
You're asking me questions because I've been out all day and I'm getting, sitting, I'm sitting down with you. Because I was, uh, out on the street, just, uh, meeting people and stuff like that all day. And then they told me that I had to meet, um, had a conference with you today. And so I said, "Let me run in."
This is the work we gotta do, yeah? Now, here's another group that I work with that's disabled, yeah? And the thing is that people with disabilities, unfortunately now the law says that they can make under minimum wage. But when you look at minimum wage, like, it barely pays for rent and food, like, how can we expect, you know what I mean? How can we take care of this community? You got any, what, can we at least, like, make sure that they get minimum wage?
Yeah.
You down for that? Thank you.
Yeah, I was the first one that, when, when we talked about living wage, I was the pastor that stood up against Kristine Quinn. Um, when, um, we were talking about living wage along with, um, the retailers and just looking at the condition of how living wages itself affects everybody across the board, no matter who you are, from gender all the way to culture.
Yeah, I'm actually surprised that Kristi Quinn isn't running for mayor right now because she's actually, uh, she was a big shot in the last one or like supposed to be, uh, fenced off by, uh, from Bloomberg, right? She was on his shoulder like so hard, remember? He was on his shoulder at every event, you know what I mean, like waiting to be coronated. But you know, de Blasio kinda moved in and, oh well, too bad, but yeah. I'm surprised she didn't run this time. That's crazy, yeah?
How you think he got that third term?
Yeah, yeah, so you know, right, so that's who Kristi Quinn is for those of y'all who don't know. Okay, so go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, and so I was one of the ones that fought for living wage. So, you know, when it comes down to wages, I believe it's always unfair when, um, the grunt work is done by, uh, uh, people that are our community. Um, and we have to really fight for, uh, to level it up, you know? And a lot of people don't want to level it up, but in order for you to achieve anything, you gotta level up. You gotta start at the same line. You can't, you know, you can't run a relay and the lines don't equal. Because even in a relay, despite how they, um, they altered, but at the end, the same length is ran. And we gotta make sure that we do that even with, um, our wages.
You know, and just so you know, just to share a little bit personal fact about myself, sir, I'm actually have been homeless in my life and men of the cloth and men of the faith have often been ones to step up where others didn't. And I have a deep appreciation for men like yourself who have decided to, you know, make, dedicate themselves to that life. Some people say different things, but a lot of them are there for people in their toughest times and I appreciate the con, and you know, conversations with people that have always been patient and kind and it's been a really good experience, man. I appreciate, um, someone, you know, in your profession. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
No doubt. I'm Christian myself, brother.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We've, we've been on the front line even when they closed the churches. Um, and they didn't call us or deemed us essential. Um, you know, um, we were looking for that list and the list came out and the 15th on the list was the, um, uh, the, uh, the liquor store. The liquor store made it to essential rather than the pastors or ministers or priests or whatever capacity of clergy that you fulfill. Um, and that was a disappointing shock because when COVID shut, um, started or came into, um, perspective, when people were losing their lives, um, I stood up, um, as one of the pastors in Bedford-Staperson because I'm connected with Interfaith Hospital and other hospitals in community to actually, um, be that intermediary. When people didn't know how COVID was gonna affect and they shut down everything and people were dropping their loved ones off at the hospital, um, I was the one that they communicated with so that somebody can have an inside, you know, knowing what's going on with their loved one. So I would get the call when people passed away and I had to pass it off to, um, uh, the, the relatives who, um, was not expecting the death to happen. But yet I had to be a trustee and a comforter at the same time, a reverend and a part of the health system at the same time.
You know, I remember watching, um, different, because I worked a lot of different campaigns. And people talk about the ability to win. And the thing is that when I watched Jamal Bowman's campaign, I realized that being a principal for a series of years, right? Building that trust in the community, generation after generation, was actually a huge strength in his favor. And I realize now that, you know, talking about the position that you're in, being a position of trust in the community, um, you know, over generations, that, um, you know, you may be a very powerful candidate and I would actually reevaluate anybody who's not looking at you seriously. I would really reevaluate, you know, um, their, uh, understanding of your campaign because that's pretty cool. Yeah. But I do have to ask about, you know, I do have another community that I work with, right, besides the disabled, so thank you for your support for them. Um, and this question is about the trans community. Now, the thing is that people who are trans, there's no law that says that you can discriminate against trans people. You get what I mean? But the thing is that when they are in public, they're trying to access things like public housing, right? They often find themselves discriminated against in ways that might not be easily documentable. You get what I mean? Causing them to have difficulty accessing services. How can we sure, uh, you know, um, communities like this, right? Um, are able to access services, public services? You know, they're often discriminated against against jobs and stuff, so they often end up really needing public housing. You get what I mean? So how, yeah?
Yeah, see, see, what, what people don't fail, uh, fail to really understand about, um, a black man, as myself, is this is not our first rodeo of being discriminated against. From communities to communities, when we first come into different, various communities that people deem that we should not be a part of, and yet we push past someone else's opinion about us. And we push past to change legislation to make sure that it's not seen by a color or gender. It's about seeing that people are, are, we're all humans, uh, we're not three-fifths of a man as they indicated in the first voting process of what we were considered because of our blackness. And so when people talked about progressive for me, progressive, I lived it. I cropped tobacco. I worked on a farm, my grandmother's farm. And, and I, I, I understood that consciousness of what, how people speak to people because of your color or because of your gender. So I believe that there needs to be a movement, not quote, quote, on the color or the gender, but a movement that pushes people to look at people as people and, and, and stop just looking at people as, "What gender I am, what color I am." And, and I think if we could push past that, uh, DJ L, that we can actually make major impacts in, in certain parts of our communities.
Here's an interesting solution that was proposed. I don't want to just run it by you just to see how you would, you know, respond to something like this. You ready?
Okay.
So let's suppose that we have some studies that say that, you know, people who are trans are 1% of the population, right? That's seeking public housing. But for some reason, right, when we look at the actual numbers, we see that only 0.2%, right? Yeah? Of the, of the, of the population is actually trans in public housing. So we say, you know, there's some discrepancy. So maybe they could put aside certain, like, housing to say, "This is for trans community," but here's where there's several problems. First of all, when the person may have kids and those kids are not trans, right, they may stay in the housing and, right? Yeah? They mean, it might not become for trans anymore, right? There's another thing where people will say that they're trans even though they're not to get access to this housing. You know what I mean? So there, uh, this is not a perfect solution at all. You get what I mean? But just to try to, like, work towards giving them some type of equity. Here's another problem too, though. If you give them like a special community, right, of like, you know, trans people, maybe like on a floor of a building or something, isn't that kind of like taking all the black people and sticking them into one building, like, it's kind of like discrimination, you know what I mean? But we're trying to give them access to resources. So how would you handle like a weird situation like this where it's kind of like you see where they're getting at, but you see some problems with it? How would you, what's your take on a weird solution like this?
DJ L, affirmative action is really that kinda concept.
Okay.
It's, it's where you put percentages.
Right.
And see, I'm, I'm against percentages because it's, it's a limitation to percentages. Because as we grow, they don't grow.
Okay, I understand.
So you get stuck in a percentage and I'm meeting a quota, so you become part of a quota. I'm meeting a quota, I don't have to go no further than that. So how do we bust out of those percentage and, and open the door? Or maybe just remove questions that really deal with the issues that, that put people in bind, in bondage. Uh, because if, if you move gender off our application,
I feel you on that. I feel you on that, but what can we do to make sure, right, that there, because while those numbers stay like below, right, they will continue to say, "We are underserved." And I get that too, you get what I mean? So we could say that, you know, um, we want to shoot past that, right? But what can we do to make sure that in some way, right, that they are achieving equity? While, you know, also, you know, we can't build a ghetto for them, so like, what are we, how? It's, it's a tough, right? Yeah? Maybe there's just, yeah, maybe there's a long discussion, yeah?
Right, it's, it's, it's a question because if you look at Nitro itself, uh, you look at Nitro itself, it's, it's, it's though is that Nitro was built for blacks and Latinos and Asians, you know? It's like we all are gathered into one bunch. Okay, that's where all the people of color goes. And then, because where I live at, we're so divided. I, I live in, the churches in the center of Marcy, uh, uh, Roosevelt, uh, Stavison Garden, uh, uh, Gates Avenue corridor, but then in the midst of all that, we got brownstones that are 1.4 million, uh, 2 million. And so we got
Things are going up, yeah.
Yeah.
Big time, big time.
And, and, and we're gonna have to kinda change the culture of, of, of what housing actually is. I mean, first they gotta invest in Nitro. I mean, do you, I, I go there, I got friends in Nitro and I go there all the time and I'm looking at the lack of investments in these housing companies.
Let's move on to the next topic right here because honestly, right? We know that the city has a bunch of different things that they're responsible for and I know housing is kinda like one of your specialty things, you know what I mean? So let's talk about housing right now because I have a little bit of work with Nitro recently, yeah? Um, a little bit of knowledge on the issue. So let's talk about, right, housing in general. Whoa, this is a deep topic and one of the huge, people call real estate corruption, one of the huge problems in the whole entire New York City government, period. So what's your take on housing, dude? What's up?
First of all, we think the biggest slumlord is who? New York City. Because they take care of all the Nitro housing that they don't take care of. So, and we're gonna start right there. So now you got, looking at a foundation of where New York City is. So in order for us to really demonstrate, uh, housing, uh, or, or good housing policies, we gotta look at how the city takes care of its own policies and how it takes care of its own housing. And they don't do a good job at that. So now when you have developers that come in, guess who gets to sign off? The city again, right? So the city signs off for developers to change the zoning. The city signs off for developers who take an AMI that's so broad and call it affordable housing and they sign off. The city signs off on land use.
Wait a second, some people may not know what you meant by AMI.
And that, that, that is what we, we, we call the, uh,
Adjusted medium income?
Yep.
Something like that, yeah? So the thing is that, right, he's talking about adjustable medium income. What will happen is they'll build affordable housing, but the affordable housing for people with like 80K up, 70K up, you know what I mean? Like incomes only. So a lot of people, right, ain't making 70K, it's not really that affordable. It's affordable for a certain class of people and those people is not, right? So that's really something called Section 8, yeah? Affordable housing, really not that affordable. Let's talk for a second about, uh, you said the developers and let's get real specific about why these apartments are going for close to 2Gs. Um, one reason why is because once they go over 20, 100 or something like that in rent, uh, per month, they're considered to be luxury and they go into the free market and they are no longer in Section 8 or 9. So that's what he's talking about with the de-zoning, right? Zoning says that this can be zoned for this use or that use, but, uh, you know, the other de-zoning, yeah? So that's, um, that's, uh, that's, that's huge right there. Um, but there's so many aspects, right? You're also talking about the repairs, right? And, uh, that's, the funding for that is under, uh, review. Now, um, I do believe that there's a push by, I think my man Louis from Fight for Nitro says that there's some potential funding coming through Nitya Velazquez. You know about that one?
Yeah.
Uh, but there might also be, uh, what are your ideas, like, as in terms of, like, you know, generating funding for the repairs?
But is it, is it enough?
Well, okay, here's another thing, right? Yeah, rad, right? We take a look at some of the, one of the, uh, I think that in Kips Bay, the, you know who bought the building out there? It was Cornell Pace. So the thing is that we've created these educational institutions that are tax-free, gobbling up, like, you know, our, our, the, the, the debt of our youth, right? Yeah? Gobbling up their futures, charging them $20,000 for something they can buy online for a hundred bucks, right? And they're buying, right, they're, they're getting rich off of it and then creating these trust funds and buying out these, uh, these, uh, real estate positions.
Right, 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 right. I mean, and, and you, I mean, you're hitting it right on the head, um, you know? But here's that question again, is that if you have 110, uh, uh, residents in Nitro, and that's 110,000, you know, so over 100,000 residents and you only have enough funding to deal with the minimum fix, uh, fix-up of 60,000 of that. So 60,000 units. So the question would be is that is the city really, uh, responsible? I guess that's how, why they want to try to sell off some of parts of, uh, Nitro. From the parking spaces to the playgrounds in order to offset, uh,
Repair costs? Yeah, this is actually, um, this sounds real suspect. I'm not a big fan of that plan because there's, who are they selling it to? You know what I mean? They could be selling it, yeah?
Yeah, it goes back to the same people that they give all the tax breaks and everything to.
You know, when we bail out these banks and stuff, like, we should become part owners, like, you know, if we're buying, basically, we're buying them. You get what I mean? So if they want to, yeah, come in and do these moves, uh, you know, that, that's ridiculous, you know, that belongs to us. I can't believe that they're pulling this, this crap, yeah?
But the thing is they using your own, they using our money to do their job.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, yeah? Yeah. Well, you know, we need to find a way to really, um, you know, we're really getting robbed here. It's really sad, yeah? Anyways, so I'm gonna actually ask about a series of other questions that are like, you know, probably prevalent to, uh, most people's concerns and stuff that the city takes care of. So let's take a look at one of them going to be, um, uh, one of the things that the city takes care of is going to be the police, right? Yeah? So there's a police response and people aren't happy, defund the police is in the air. What's your take on the whole police reform issue?
I, I think that key word that you just used is reform. Uh, there has to be a turnover. Um, uh, uh, one, a scholar says before, um, his name slips me and I know him, Du Bois. He says that, um, how can you, uh, why can you, or how can you, uh, depend upon a system that's, that was never set up for you? Um, and I'm modifying it, uh, again, when we look at the policing practices, if we actually true about it and go back to the historical contents of it, it was slave catchers. You know, so there's a process of, of a mental illness that's stuck in, uh, the police force. Is that there needs to be one of retraining, uh, of what the concept of public safety is. And that is to keep the public safety and then you have to deal with that CPR that you put on courtesy professional and all of that, you put on your cards and respect and you got, evidently you're forgetting your job. Um, and, and so with that context, um, reform is what we need. Um, we also need a change. You can't just reform without including and bringing brown and, and black people, uh, to the top. Because if your, if your whole administration, uh, stays the same, I call it the cloud, stays white, there's no way in the world that no matter how much money you take away, that, that ideology, that concept stays the same until you integrate and change the dynamics of who's leading it.
Hey, I got a question for you, okay? Check it out. So the thing is that, uh, you know, like, uh, actually, I don't know how much of them are in your district, but you know Hasidic Jews? Okay, you know how they kinda like have their own, like, police force, kind of, like, it's not really police, like, if it's really serious, they will call the police. But kinda like they have their own community kinda thing going on? So if we take a look at the black community, like, back in, I think, the 90s, right, a lot of times, like, people would, I, I miss those days, honestly, the pro-African movement and stuff that people had, the, I mean, whatever, I mean, for some reason went out of fashion, whatever. Let's bring it back, but let's take a look at, um, one, one of the things back in those days was crap. What was I just talking about? Um,
Which one?
Before the Pan-African movement thing.
Back in, when it was self-policing was the, uh,
Oh, yeah, so the thing is they would have, like, Nation of Islam would be often, like, there would be a lot of security for events, you know what I mean? So what about, right? Can we maybe, what about this community, right? Can maybe the black community have maybe something similar, right? Where we take the policing to our own hands, right? If it's hard for you to kill someone or treat someone inhumanely when they're, right, your own neighborhood people, when they know you, when they're from your community.
You know, you, you're gonna have to change the, um, the legislation for that because, um, I heard and, and that conversation came up. Um, and they, I heard that it's against the law, uh, for someone to serve in their own community. They can serve on the outer of their community.
If the Hasidics are allowed to do it, we should be allowed to do it.
There you go.
You know what I mean? Yeah.
I, I understand what you're saying, but then, you know, there's always two set of rules.
I would, you know, yeah. Rather than defund it, I would like maybe say that with, like, you know, community policing, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's moving more, moving more. No, it's so, it's more money towards, um, 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 community policing, to mental health services, social workers, or they're, to reroute the funding, uh, to build up community versus to tear it down.
Yeah, yeah, I feel you on that, yeah? Yeah. The mental funding thing, I have mixed feelings about, uh, the rest of it though. I appreciate, I appreciate that the sentiments behind the mental, um, thing. Um, just so you know, like, I was, from my homeless experience, um, I know that sometimes I felt like if they could put the, uh, title of mental illness upon me, that it would justify them being able to do many other things, you know what I mean? Like, it would take away my agency and, and also, the thing is that if they apply the mental agency thing on you, right? Yeah? That could be disqualifying for jobs, you know what I mean? Like, I didn't want someone else to have the ability or, you know, the incentive, right, to diagnose me as mentally ill when I needed to just get my shit done, you know what I mean? I wasn't saying I was depressed, you know what I mean? Was I upset about, like, the fact that people wasn't, like, you know, taking my issue seriously? Yes, you know what I mean? Was I depressed? No, you know what I mean? I was just, yeah, but to them, right, I seemed unreasonable, whatever, okay?
No, no, I respect that, um, but when we deal with mental health, for me, it does not only, uh, deal with mental illness. Mental health for me is I need a mental day. You know, I need a break.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's, and there's in life when you're so, so active and so moving that you have to now take some mental days.
And some of the people out there do need the services, like, I'd say that's true as well, you know what I mean? Some of the people are getting kicked out of mental services just because of, they don't want to, the government Of mental services just because of they don't wanna, the government doesn't pay for it, so that's true as well. Uh, but you know, like, I just wanted to be some breaks, right, on the whole, like, the mental. Health issue thing, because if we give them too much money, they will create their own market, you get what I mean?
No, you got it.
We gotta be real careful about that, that's all I'm saying, right?
I agree.
I, I, they could get more, I agree, but you know, yeah, be real careful, yeah?
There's gotta be a balance, it gotta be balanced on, um, what we do when it comes down to the mental health situation across the board.
The health.
How we view it.
Industry is super, super corrupted, super suspect, yeah? Yeah, so let's talk about actually, that's going on to health, let's talk about reopening. When are people, right, under, under your leadership, when do you see things peak going back to normal? Or whatever, well, or what's, how's the future look for you with reopening?
I, I think, uh, across the board, um, looking at from education to health to small businesses. Um, so the question would be, uh.
I think most people are wondering like, when, when is my life going back to normal?
Right, and, 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 cause people say, what is the new norm?
May, that as well, that as well, right? Maybe some people say there is a new normal, right? Yeah?
Yeah.
Is there a new normal for you? Yeah, what is that?
Yeah, so the new norm, you know, would be is that what percentage of the people actually get the vaccine? What percentage of people don't? Um, are people still willing who don't have the vaccine or choose to get it? Are still willing to change that, that, that norm is the face mask, the respect of others?
Let's talk about one concern people have, right? Will you be, are you for supporting policies that say? If you don't get the vaccine, does that limit your ability to participate in certain things in society?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not for that, I'm not for that, because uh, you, because you, you, you. When, when it comes down to new things, uh, and, and that quick, you gotta give people a choice.
Yeah.
You know?
I appreciate that, yeah. They already having problems, yeah, they look at them, yeah, they already having problems.
There's a lot of problems, I, I can't even believe you, in, in, in America. And see, in America, especially in the black community is like.
Real suspect, yeah.
Nah, well, you suspect, nah, you know, you got us running around crazy, nah, that ain't it. So that suspect piece, you know, is up, is up in the air and we got to really give people an option to, to believe or not believe. And this is something that we really gotta do, give people options.
Yeah, black people are right to be skeptical of the health industry. It really turns y'all into customers in a bad way, in a bad, bad way, yeah, I'm sorry. Anyways, yeah, let's move on, yeah, so let's talk about, um, so the education system, right? Yeah? SHSAT is a hot topic right now, right? What do you stand on that whole thing?
Um, as an educator, um, in this, that's been in the system, um. Um, and I taught, um, fifth graders, fourth and fifth graders for, uh. I think about, yeah, about, about five to seven years, somewhere in between there. Uh, um, and in that I saw the, um. The lack of resources. L is, it was more of, of how do you start, uh, communities or, or help communities, um. When, when there, for me, there, there's two sets of, of education, there is the. The leader type education and there's the worker's type education. And in a district sixteen, because it's the lowest, because of the lack of resources. You would ask yourself often, um, are you actually educating people? To always stay on that, that level of a worker versus somebody who's actually able. To begin to imagine and to think entrepreneur, uh, to become their own person, be creative and. And become, uh, you know, um, more than somebody who's on a nine to five job. So for me, education is connected to the future on how we are moved and the lack of resources that are within our community. Plays a major part for me to run for city council because I see it, I saw it. And I'm concerned about it, even for my own kids. That do I have to leave one community to go to another community to get my kids educated? Because they don't wanna invest in my community? So that's why I assume for education.
Yeah, the curriculum, the standards, it's really sad, yeah? So, um, I do feel like what you're saying about like, you know, um, so it sounds to me like SHSAT. You might not be for it, you know, I mean, I get, right, where, um, some people say that, you know, there's other things to a student besides just a test score.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Right, but uh, one of the things that Asian Americans face, right? Yeah, like when we try to get into Harvard or things like that, right? Is that they discriminate against us using all the soft tactics, right? They say, well, this person doesn't really seem like a leader material. I just don't think this person is likable, right? Yeah? Um, just, just made up, just made up bullshit, yeah? And we can see that they, it's legally, right, they're discriminating against Asian Americans, yeah? Another thing that's really kind of perverse about the, uh, about the university system is that they let in people who look Asian, right? Yeah? Right, because they are Asian from Asia, like Chinese students, Indian students, all those. Grad students that are teaching those classes, so the campus looks like it has Asian Americans.
Right.
But it doesn't have Asian Americans, it has Asians, you get, there's a difference. There's a real difference, right? Yeah? So, the thing is that, um, when we take a look at the way that they discriminate against us. Right, using all those soft core tactics, right, those, those soft things that you can't measure? Like, not that those tests are fair for us either. Cultural bias, right? Come on, like, you think, we're, you're talking about eighteenth century literature, you think the parents know about that stuff, they do not. But that's the only way that we have any chance of something even close to fair. You get what I mean? That's how we feel about those tests. Because we know it's rigged against us, but we just say, we're gonna play that game, you know what I mean? And we're gonna win anyways, but we know, we're, we know we're gonna get, we know we're gonna get discriminated against anyways. It's really sad and ridiculous, how even in the progressive left, how underrepresented we are. Despite our qualifications, there's no doubt about it, the progressive left is just, is racist against Asian Americans, there's no doubt about it. There's absolute absence of us in the community, you get what I'm saying?
No, I got you, bro, I got you, you know, um, you know, um, I mean, you, you all are the same as we are.
Appreciate you.
And there's a level of discrimination that has been hidden within, um, in America to the point where. People don't consider, um, discrimination anymore.
Our families are dying now, our families are starving to death in North Korea. That's our uncles, cousins, you know, I mean, stuff like that, our direct family is literally dying of hunger because of US sanctions.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, and also like honestly, in any city in America, in half an hour, you could have a Korean hooker at your door. Right? Yeah?
Mm hmm.
The thing is that, right, we are human trafficked right now, right now, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, you know, that's okay, you know, I mean, every day we just gotta keep on, you know, I mean, that's.
Keep pushing.
God is always there for us, you know what I mean?
Keep hope alive and, and, and you know, um.
Yeah.
There, there's a fight. L, I, I just wanna let you know from, from my experience, um, um, born in Brooklyn, raised in South Carolina. And had to deal with, um, uh, the, the other cultures, uh, when they call you a boy and. All that stuff, and that's not too far, cause my grandmother did not, we were still in the outhouse in the nineteen eighties. You know what outhouses, the bathroom was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so in the nineteen eighties, you know, I, I was still going to the outhouse, not knowing that a moccasin. Uh, eel was gonna come out of the toilet, you know, so, 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 no, so I grew up on.
That's a snake, for those y'all who don't know, that's a snake, water snake, yeah?
And so I kinda, I know this, I, yeah, I'm in New York now, but my mother made sure that I understood. What, what we came from, where we come from, my mother, my grandmother lived to about a hundred and one. And, 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 and she worked the farm until she was just done, but yet. It was that survival tactic, you know, so when I come to New York and people say you're not progressive enough because I got a suit on. I don't, I don't wanna hear that because the fact is that I lived my whole life was lived as a progressive because I was fighting every day. To not be at the bottom of the barrel. I grew up on welfare, anyway, cause people don't think, oh, a, a household of seven kids. And we grew up on welfare and welfare was the, our support, so, um. When I got, when I graduated from high school, I ended up back on welfare at the age of twenty one. And so I had to make a decision in my life, do I just give up hope? Or do I restore hope? And I restored hope to the point, you know, four degrees later, uh, you know, cause I had to push myself. To understand that ain't nobody was gonna help me.
Yeah, and I've been on the welfare and honestly, welfare is really kind of messed up and I'll tell you how it works, yeah? You're in there for maybe a couple of weeks, maybe a month, I forget exactly how long it is, yeah? Something about that. Then they move you to something called workfare where you're getting less than minimum wage, you get what I mean? What the, less than minimum wage, yeah?
Yeah.
What the fuck is that, man?
And you work, and you, so you work and you, so it's, it's kinda like a slave labor.
Kinda really is, honestly, it's, yeah, it really is. It's unfortunate.
Mm hmm.
And if the system can, right, and, uh, yeah, it's sad, so. And that was really done under the Clinton administration, they do, they, remember, remember that announcement they make at the beginning? Where they tell you, this was done by the Clinton administration, they're all salty about it, you're like, you're salty too, you're like, damn it, why you do this? Yeah? Yeah, I remember that.
Way to work, brother, that's what it was.
Yeah.
It's better work.
Hey, man, so much love out there for that, you know, um, but those experiences did definitely, and you know what? That's very cool. Because the thing is that there's unfortunately, right, um, and. Some candidates might not be happy to hear this, but they claim to be able to fix the system, but they've never experienced it or seen it at that level. And the thing is that that's a real powerful thing, right, to be able to know the system inside and out like that. Um, and so I really hope that a lot of people start paying attention because there is a difference in understanding here, yeah?
Cause anybody can study legislature or study issues.
It's not the same.
Actually live in issue, you are the issue. You know, where people, when people talk about issue, can you explain it from a, 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 a legislation policy on? What the issue of homelessness is?
And by the way, right, yeah, and by the way, let's suppose that you're a politician, right? Yeah? And you talk to the management, right?
Hell, I don't wanna be a politician, I wanna be a servant.
I get it, right, and that's why, that's why it's good that you come from, right, to, from seeing the stuff on the, from the grounds. Because if you're a politician who never experienced it, who do you talk to? You talk to the management, right? But guess what? Is it ever the management's faults? Ever? Right, yeah, you talk to the management, oh, whose fault is it?
It didn't work, it had to be everybody else.
Yeah, it's everybody else, yeah, it's never the manager, yeah, and then you see that this, unfortunately, right, it creates a reliance. On a corrupt system, which is right, because the politicians do a lot of other stuff, so it's not really fair to them either, you get what I mean? What y'all need to do is y'all need to be responsible and elect people who know actually what the freak they're talking about. I'm still getting to know you, Mr. uh, Waterman, but I like the things you're saying and honestly, you might have support right here, yeah?
Thank you, man, I appreciate that.
Doubt, man, yeah, it's, it's, things are adding up in the right sense, honestly, being a, um, being of the faith. Damn, man, you, you're sounding me pretty hard, man, yeah, I, I'm, you're making me a believer, but you know, I, you have to be skeptical in this game, you understand, right? Yeah?
Yes, sir.
You gotta be skeptical, but you're, yeah, you're coming, you're, you're doing a damn good job, sir, a damn good job, all right? Yeah, by the way, let's, let's share that information, how can people find about, more about your campaign, you like update on Twitter, like you got events coming up? What's the deal?
Uh, man, uh, you can actually go on to my website, robertwaterman.com. Um, and there, when you go on the website, you can actually, uh, send an email to info. Um, at robertwaterman.com, or you can actually just follow us, there's a plethora of stuff that we're doing in the community. Again, uh, from food banking, uh, to, uh, block cleaning. You know, cause I don't know if you know, after the snow, the city was dirty. It seemed like sanitation never went back to clean up after that snow, that snowstorm, but we started working. And helping seniors, um, on Saturdays to do block cleaning. And you know, I'm just out there just trying to just get to know the community. Uh, or know more of the community, because I, I kinda knew it in my, um, twenty, going on twenty years here.
Do you update on social media commonly?
Yes, um, I'm on.
What do you want the most?
Rob, I am, uh, Instagram, Instagram, Twitter, uh, you can hook me up, um. Me and my wife just did a, a, a maternal, um, conversation, um, on Instagram, um. That, cause this, this was maternal week, um, uh, that deals with, um, and black communities on how women, um. Suffer, um, through pregnancy, um, either by death or by loss of, of, of child. And so we just wanted to make sure, um, that we, we, we're sensitive to the issues that are at hand. Um, so Instagram, Facebook, uh, website, uh, Twitter, uh, Robert Waterman, uh, Robert M. Waterman. You will find me, you can just tag me and I'll follow back with you, you know, I just wanna stay connected. So yo, DJ L, you know, you've been, um, I, am I saying your name right?
DJ L seven, it's all good, either way, bro, it's all good.
You know, uh, you know, uh, I, I just wanna just, you know, I didn't know what I was getting into the conversation with you, but I knew I had to have it. Um, and that's why I just made the time and block it out and say, listen, I gotta talk to this brother. Because you cannot be effective of anything when you don't have information. And so I really wanna thank you for the information that you shared with me.
I got something cool coming up, my brother. One of the things is that, like, you just saw like me asking you a bunch of questions, right, for a bunch of political groups. So if you have something that you wanna get out to the rest of the candidates, right, I can put that message out there. Also, if you're looking for someone who has. Working on similar issues to you, I can put you in touch with them because I've been talking to people and asking them what they about, you get what I mean? So I can help you form powerful coalitions to kind of get business done. So, that's pretty cool. Actually, what's coming up, I think I'm trying to arrange for this coming Monday, not this Monday, but next Monday?
Mm hmm.
No, is it this coming Monday? Damn, I think it's this coming Monday, damn, what day is it? Friday, right?
Yeah, today's Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, 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 not this Monday, but next Monday then, okay? What we're trying to arrange is, uh, there's a, uh, you're, there's a guy named, uh. I think Eddie Harrison or something, I've gotta look his name again, but he's the guy who called out, he works for the police. But he actually called them out for racist quotas, you get what I mean? You heard about that guy?
Yeah.
He's running for city council, as is, um, there's another guy named Stephen Lee, who I know, who also called out corruption in the police department.
Okay.
These guys also talk with Serpico once in a while and like me and Serpico have exchanged back and forth on Twitter, not that he's agreed to show up at the event, right? Yeah?
Mm hmm.
But we're actually hoping to have a panel discussion, uh, on that day, on Monday at seven PM around this issue. And I, what's cool about it is that a lot of times people who aren't cops, right? Yeah? Wanna try to design police policy, but I think that's a mistake, I think we have to at least hear from someone who's done the job before, you know what I mean? Yeah, you know what I mean, really, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, cause you, you're asking people to make decisions about somebody else's lifestyle when they have never lived it. And, and, and again, like we talked about the homelessness, we talked about the welfare. If you've never been on it, how can you really make a sound decision? Because your educational will be lack only to a book knowledge. But even with the policing piece, is that you got to have people who's been there. Who understand the policies and the hidden policies that they're given, so you're, you're right on, L seven.
You know what my boy told me? Actually, so the thing is that like, I'm not like a super, super duper expert, but I taught self-defense, things like that, right? Yeah? So the thing is that one of the new things that they have for the police, which I get it, right? Yeah? They don't want any touch on any part of the torso, right? Yeah? So the thing is that, right, um, they don't even wanna grab the shoulder here. So the thing, like, I, I get that, right, cause it's like, you know, maybe they press down or something, right? Yeah?
Yeah.
But the problem is that once you don't, if you wanna really hold somebody. It's better if you press down here so they can't like rock up. But once you don't touch the torso, if you just grab them by the arm, they could whip up and hit you with their head. Or they might jerk around and hit their head on behind them, they could jerk their out, their, their shoulder up and they get enough torque to pull the arm out. It becomes way more dangerous, like in my opinion, way more. So I really, like, I get like where their nurse put the hand on the torso, but to me, like, that just created a super dangerous situation.
Hmm.
You know what I mean? So, I don't know how true that is, but that's what my boy, uh, who works in the force, I mean, he was talking something about that and I was like, yo, that sounds crazy. I'm not really, I, I get where you would be freaking out about these new rules.
Right, 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 hmm, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's why I'm the civilians who have no idea, right? Yeah, but the, you know, I mean, they never had to ever restrain anybody, like.
They've never been fearful.
Yeah, okay.
They've never been sitting in communities that they didn't know.
That, that is well, yeah, I'm really for that community policing idea, so, I would love to have you there. And, um, there's a lot of actually people who are involved in this housing thing. And on a lot of different, in a lot of different conversations, so like people with the zoning thing, there's some people are fighting that, um, that's Cam Brannus. And Lou Sospidis and also, uh, Lu- Louis from Fight for Nitro. He's on Twitter and they actually have access to the whole entire mailing list of Nitro, so that could probably get you some votes right there, yeah?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, cool, man, hey, which district you running for again?
Thirty-six.
And which?
Bedford-Stavison and North Ground Heights.
All right, cool, man, one love, brother, and good luck on that.
Likewise, peace, my brother.
Thanks, peace.
It's a dark day in our nation when high-level authorities. Will seek to use every method to silence dissent, the truth must be told.
And if you want the truth, you need to check out independent media producers just like myself, DJ L seven. You should subscribe and hit the bell icon to get notifications when I release a new video. We are on all the major platforms, that includes Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and of course YouTube. Unfortunately, we have definitely seen that these mainstream outlets will cave to corporate interests, so we encourage you to join our independently moderated communities of Reddit and Discord. We also encourage you to subscribe to us on BitChute and Daily Motion so you can see the content that YouTube doesn't want us to let you see. Hey, now it's time for the most important part of the video, that's right, it's time for us to tell you about the taking action. Hey, now it's time for the most important part of the video. That's right. It's time for us to tell you about the Taking Action Group. Do you need an activist? Or maybe there's no activists around willing to help with your cause and you need to learn to become an activist? That's exactly why we're here. Every week, we get up with people from across the nation, in fact, even sometimes nationally. And we develop strategies and a game plan to address the issues that are affecting all of us. Every week, myself from New York City and of course my co-host Lisa from Los Angeles provide a coast-to-coast perspective on what's going on in the country. If you want to donate to help out with expenses, travel, equipment, you know, stuff like that, then I'd definitely appreciate it and you could hit us off. At Venmo or PayPal. Thanks a lot. Hey, by the way, we also have a merch store, so check it out. Oh my goodness, it seems like you've reached the end of the video, so make sure you check out some of our other videos, uh, make sure you subscribe. This is your last chance to do so, so thanks a lot and looking forward to seeing you on the next one. Hope you guys enjoy it. Please comment below if you have any questions or issues you'd like me to address. And if you're an activist, the time to make things happen is now.